I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic- For which it stands. One nation- Under God- Indivisible- With liberty- And justice- For all. Okay, this is called to order.
Okay. At this point, we have a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that everybody? Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Okay, now... Are we at the public comments now? Is that what we're doing? Uh-uh. Okay, this is the approximate position and time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign a attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, a parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of cameras, etc.
So, there were questions that came forward. Barbara, you hear?
Was there-
Yeah, there we go.
I am.
So my recommendation would be to read those questions.
Should I read those?
Yep, my recommendation would be that you read the questions, and you can see I did answer them in red as well, so you're welcome to read the answers.
Okay. First question is from Bob Brenner. Why are community members not allowed to use the turf track facilities? Other schools still have access to both, even while schools have been closed. Hamburg is one example. If people can hike at state parks, county parks, and at the waterfront, why can't they walk around the track that the community paid for? And Sandy answered, "The track and fields are open as of this weekend. All social distancing regulations are in effect and being monitored." And then the second question is, "If social distancing guidelines can be followed, can the turf athletic facility be utilized for a live graduation ceremony?" The answer is, "It is unlikely that we will be able to hold any gathering with this many people before the end of June. Therefore, the graduation committee, which has student members, is designing a plan that will allow students to walk across the stage outside so that their parents can watch and take photos. We will also record all the speeches and create an actual ceremony."
So, just as a comment on that one, we're making a Plan A and a Plan B.
And I think there were no other questions.
The presumption is that we hope that we can do what we're planning, is our Plan A, which is what's listed here.
Correct.
If, in fact, we don't have authority to do that by the Department of Health or by the governor, then we will go to Plan B, which will be completely virtual. But there have been no definitive decisions made at this time.
And Sandy, just to clarify, the track and the-
Right, business.
Fields are now open. They were open this past Monday.
Yes, they were open, actually Friday afternoon with signage up there. We are still under regulation to have no more than 10 people congregating in any one place, and so the Eden Police Department has been asked to please monitor that.
Oh, are we ready to move on?
Yep.
Okay. So, business. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Director of Facilities, David Martin, be accepted effective June 30th, 2020. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Martin for his 23 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like-
Sorry. Any discussion?
I would just simply like to say at this point that during this health crisis that David's crisis management skills has certainly shined right from the very beginning. We were one of the first districts to be closed down within a day, and that has made all the difference to us, and so I want to thank him for that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Now, we have tenure appointments, so can we move to that? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Heather Weberby granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August 31st, 2020.
We need a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep, Heather is with us-
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, there's such a delay.
There is a delay. I can hear it, too. Heather is with us tonight, and we're absolutely, as a district, thrilled to bring her name forward to you for tenure. She's served in a number of different positions for us and has done an excellent job in every one of them.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Heather.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I don't think we finished the motion.
No, we didn't. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
All right, congratulations.
Now, congratulations. Yay!
Now, congratulations.
Great job, Ellen.
That upon the recommendation of the- I'm sorry, are we ready? Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Madison Weberby granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective August 30th, 20-
Second. Second.
Any discussion?
Yep, I've had the pleasure of-
Second.
I've been able to-
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I've been able to observe Madison a number of times in her classroom, and her strength is absolutely as a cooperative and a collaborative teacher. I'm also thrilled to bring her name forward to you today.
Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? There we go. Any opposed? Any abstained?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, for what it's worth, before we keep going-
Thank you.
I see a lot of people's faces free. I don't know what's going on. I feel like this is probably one of the worst connections we've had.
Okay, are we good? Okay. And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Shannon Fitzgerald be granted tenure as school counselor effective August 31st, 2020.
Okay, second. Okay.
Any discussion? Can you guys hear me? Any discussion?
So, Jen, Jen, it's Sandy. Could you just see if there's anyone else on your Wi-Fi at your house who's into things of possibility of us having such a connection problem is actually being generated from yours?
Uh, I will, I will-
And I'll talk about Shannon while you do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Shannon has been an absolute pleasure to have in our district in one of our most critical positions as a school counselor. And even during this time of crisis, the innovative and positive initiatives that are coming out of that office are just inspiring, so I'm absolutely thrilled to bring her name forward to you.
Okay, so the only thing I could come up with was my daughter doing her homework.
Let's try it. Did you tell her to stop doing her homework?
I did. I said, "Can you go outside?"
All right, let's do it.
Okay, so hopefully that helps. Sorry.
So, we're on discussion. We did the discussion for Shannon.
I would just like to say, "Thank you." Sorry.
You'll take them.
You're very welcome. Congratulations.
Let us get, we'll finish the motion here. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Shannon.
I'm so happy to be a part of the Eden community. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Gabrielle Rodriguez be granted tenure as a special education teacher effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Gabrielle's also been one of those teachers that's been a bright light for us coming in to a department full of change, constant change all the time, with amazing responsibilities, and again, during this time period to be able to manage it through. And so, I know that Shawn Johnson, who has retired, and also Mary Maxson have both just said wonderful things, as I do, for Gabrielle coming into our district and staying through tenure.
Really exciting. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very welcome. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Congratulations, Gabrielle.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, Brad Egan be granted tenure as a special education teacher effective September 25th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep, Brad is another one, coming into our special ed department and just taking on every single challenge that Shawn Johnson or Mary Maxson could give him, and in some cases, teaching, well, actually, probably in every single case, teaching multiple school years of subject areas, and then also having a little baby this past month, so we're thrilled to have Brad with us, and he just did his first-ever virtual National Honor Society induction, and it went off without a hitch. So, again, welcome to Brad and happy to bring him to you tonight.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Sarah Fiorella be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective September 25th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yep, Sarah can be found everywhere. She can be found working on our Chromebooks and iPads over the summer. She can be found working on anything to do with Makerspace or the GLP Garden Club, always positive, always with a smile, and just an absolute treasure to have a GLP.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Abstaining, motion carried.
Congratulations, Sarah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do you want them to stay on, everybody? Are you going to make them stay through the whole board meeting?
No.
Oh, no.
Thank you, I want you to-
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Mrs. Rita Stur, head election inspector, Mrs. Virginia Gunther, Mrs. Marian Phelan, Mrs. Ann Sheehan, Mrs. Barbara Caffery, and Mrs. Margaret McLaughlin be appointed as election inspectors for the annual meeting and budget vote on June 9th, 2020, at a rate of $30.40 per hour, and further authorize the district clerk to fill any vacancies in these positions which may occur prior to June 9th, 2020, with individuals from the Board of Elections Inspector personnel list.
Second.
Any discussion? I actually do have a question, and I probably should have asked this years ago, but the people who are appointed to be our election inspectors, are they from Eden? Are they, I'm assuming, I would hope they're from-
Barbara, would you like to answer that question?
Yes. Hi, Jen.
Hi.
I get a list from the Board of Elections, and they are people that are in the district.
They are?
They're supposed to be, but yeah, and they, I know most of them. Most of them, the ones I know, do live in the district.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
That the Board of Education declares a state of emergency for Eden Central School District from May 15th, 2020 until the end of the 2019-2020 school year. School budget votes and elections will be held June 9th, 2020 by absentee ballot only.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the appointment of the following advisors and/or coaches be rescinded for the 2019-2020 school year because the Activity Club did not begin due to a school closure ordered by the New York State Governor from March 18th, 2020 through the end of the 2019-2020 school year because of the COVID-19 health crisis. Garden Club GLP, Anne Priceal, Sarah Fiorella, Katie Mathis, Math Olympiad, Grade 6, Joanne Meredith, Musical Director Memorial Day, Sarah Roberts, Talent Show, Kelly Grimaldi, Joanna Funk.
Second.
Any discussion?
Only that this is in keeping what we have done at prior board meetings to rescind appointments that never occurred. For example, in the last board meeting, we rescinded an extended leave sub because we did not need her during closure.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2019-2020 school calendar be revised due to COVID-19 school closures. Do you want me to read all of those?
No, I'm going to talk about that in discussion, Ellen.
Okay, fine.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, as you-
All in favor? Oh, sorry, Sandy.
It's okay. So, as you can see on the agenda, I put the notes here for the public to see. We also pushed it out as a social, as a global call to everyone in the district so they could see, the last day for students is Friday, June 12th. The last day for teachers is Wednesday, June 17th. Our 10-month support staff will vary by building and department, and each person will be notified in writing. We also have parent and student drop-off dates and times for school equipment, Chromebooks and supplies, and calculators. Grades 11 and 12 are Tuesday, June 9th. Grades 8 and 9 are, I'm sorry, this is not correct, grades 11 and 12 are Tuesday, June 9th. Grades 9 and 10 are Wednesday. Thursday is grade 6, 7, and 8, and I will fix this. On Friday is pre-K to 5:00, and then a makeup day for anything on Monday, June 15th. I think what's most important for our community to know also is the last day that we will be delivering food is Wednesday, June 10th, and that beginning on June 11th, all food provision will be pickup-only, and that the last day for food provision is Friday, June 26th.
Sandy, do we turn in Chromebooks every year, or do the kids have them, just keep them throughout the summer?
No, we've never had them keep them during the summer for multiple reasons. We clean them, we image them, and then we also try to prolong the life on them.
Okay.
Are teachers going to have, going to have to, or have they already packed up their rooms and-
We, it's a great question that you ask, is we are currently having teachers come in on a schedule so that we can make sure that we maintain regulation of how many people are in the district and know that they're here to close up their rooms, and then our technology department with Lucinda comes through as well to work on the technology end of it before the custodians, cleaners, building and grounds comes through to actually try to get a jump on doing the rooms. We anticipate that we'll have some extra cleaning to do over the summer due to the COVID regulations, so it's actually helpful to get a bit of a jump on it.
I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question. The juniors and seniors, will they not be expected to do work after June 9?
Any work that they will be given will be work that is not to be turned in, so it is work that, on their honor, or work that they find engaging on their own, but we will not be monitoring what they do. It would be, it would be almost analogous to what happens during Regions Week, where students get credit for it, but they're not necessarily coming to school or doing instruction.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Capitol Outlay Contract with Rodriguez Construction Group Incorporated be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
Business report.
Provision. Last Friday, we prepared three days' worth of meals for 704 students. That equates to 6,336 meals just for Friday through Sunday meals. I would like to thank Personal Touch Transportation and Support Staff, who are ensuring our students receive two meals per day during this crisis. We surpassed the 50,000 mark as of the beginning of May. The annual budget vote in Board of Education election is scheduled by absentee ballot. Two incumbent board members are running for two vacant seats for a three-year term, Cheryl Carpenter and Alan Kindly. All ballots are due into the district office by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 9th. A list of all registered voters is available on our website. All eligible voters are encouraged to vote. If you believe you are a registered or eligible voter and do not see your name on the list, you must contact us at absenteeballot692020@edencsd.org so that you can receive an absentee ballot. Budget hearing is scheduled for 7:00 PM, May 26th, and will be livestreamed with opportunity for residents to email questions before or during the meeting. Email your questions to betomasulo@edencsd.org. Absentee ballots, the required budget postcard, and a postage-paid envelope will be mailed during the week of May 25th. If you believe you are eligible to vote and do not receive an envelope by May 27th, 2020, please contact absenteeballot692020@edencsd.org. Again, all ballots are due in the district office by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 9th, in order to be counted.
Laura, are we still mailing them out by that date?
No, they will be in their possession by the 9th, but they will make contact, and we will figure out a way to get it to them.
No, but I thought we weren't mailing it till the 2nd, or arriving on the 2nd.
No, we've pushed up the mailing time.
Okay.
The contact information is also on the district website under headlines. The New York State Department of Budget has released its 2021 enacted state budget financial plan. At this time, absent of federal stimulus money, New York State will have to cut $8.2 million from its fiscal year, I'm sorry, yeah, million, from its fiscal year 2021 budget, estimating that 20% to 30% of essential services like education will need to be cut. The DOB, Department of Budget's, report also makes the following statement regarding the need for additional federal assistance. Federal legislation provides that almost no unrestricted aid to replace the severe loss in expected state tax receipts. As of the date of this financial plan, certain congressional leaders have expressed support for legislation to provide such aid to the states and local governments, but no consensus has been reached. Therefore, the state cannot count on additional federal aid and must move ahead with imposing deep widespread reductions to local aid programs and agency operations to provide for a balanced budget in fiscal year 2021. If unrestricted aid becomes available or tax receipts rebound unexpectedly, the planned reductions may become less severe. The state is actively engaging with federal representatives to secure the needed aid. And that concludes the business report.
So, Laura, I'm just going to say, I've gotten some input from people saying that, you know, we should be looking forward, and these aren't people, you know, just, we should be preparing ourselves for federal dollars to come in, and that our budget should reflect that, but just reading that statement right there, there's no, and we all knew it, there's no promise that federal dollars are coming in, and you can't plan a budget based on promises and wishes and dreams and hopes. Correct?
Well, we are required to have a balanced budget where revenues equal expenditures, and if there's a revenue shortfall in the year, we will have to act accordingly, but our budget has been prepared as per the regulations of a balanced budget. That being said, I have followed the directive of the Board of Education to take that into consideration when we use unappropriate, we use appropriated fund balance, which is savings that the district has and reserves, and property taxes to minimize the impact on the students we're educating and to be as conservative as possible with a tax levy.
So, if federal dollars were to come through, would they come, they wouldn't come directly to us, or would they be filtered through the state?
That depends on how it is set up.
Okay.
Typically, they're filtered through the state.
Okay.
It's supposed to be part of the, the, the bill they're negotiating now, where we go to the state and then the governor, they would use it for police, firemen, and, and school. But it, they're just, they're far apart on negotiation.
That is my understanding as well.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Superintendent's report.
All the notes up here under the public content session again, but I'll just go through them as Laura did on hers for a number of reasons. We're super excited about our top three students. This is part of SARD or Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner. We have a ceremony for them every year, and they receive a gift through the Erie Niagara Superintendent group. Barb sits on the board of that, so we're always very proud to have Barb Thomasello be a part of it. These are our top three students. That ranking is done at the end of January for this school year. Number one is Aislinn Jerome. Number two is Megan Walsh. She also sits on the board. And I do believe it might be her birthday today. Am I right, Rachel?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It is her birthday.
Yeah, I thought it was her birthday today. And then Rachel, who's sitting with us right here, is number three. So congratulations to the-
Congratulations.
Yep.
Good.
Yeah. And so we will figure out a way to get this gift to Aislinn and Megan and Rachel. And it will be quite special, and we'll make sure that we get photo shots of it when the gift comes through. Unfortunately, summer rec camp through Town Rec and the mini camp have been canceled by the town for the summer. Other activities that are typically offered by the town are being evaluated, so I would just suggest that the community check the town webpage for more information on that. The May and the June district newsletter that Barb puts together will be on our website in June. We will make sure that we have items on that newsletter that apply for our retirees and also our seniors. Our SARD students will be on there, and we're always very excited about that June newsletter. I'm also thrilled to direct you each week to our Eden North Collins Penny Saver. You can catch that online if you do not have the hard copy of it or a subscription to it for recognitions of students and our building and staff. We've highlighted students each week by building. They've been an absolute inspiration to us at Eden. And I, I can't express enough how excited I am for what the parents and the students have sent in. You'll also see coming up in one of the next publications for the Eden North Collins Penny Saver is Art Alive, which was part of our art department with Rachel Braun and Lisa Nacostro, where our students had to replicate a masterpiece, and it's, it's just really quite profound. I have been trying to put a letter into the Penny Saver every other week so that the entire town is updated on what we're doing so that they can be sure that even though our buildings are closed, that our students are still being fed and they're still being instructed. We were recognized by the U.S. News &amp; World Report 2020 as number 14 for best high schools in Western New York. These rankings are based on outstanding outcomes or expectations in math and reading state assessments, an array of students passing college-level exams, which for us are advanced placement, and a high proportion of graduating seniors. So I'm super excited to bring that forward to you. GLP was recognized by the New York State Education Department for the second year in a row as a school of recognition. This ranking is based also on outstanding student attendance levels, example performance on grade three state assessments in both ELA and math, excellent student programming, and then other data that is applicable for the state formula. I do congratulate all our parents, our students, our teachers, and our administrators for both of those recognitions. I also want to thank the Eden PTA for their generous donation, their time, and their support with the senior 2020 lawn signs. I see. I also want to thank Shannon Rice for putting the videos together for Facebook. It's really great to hear all the horns honking as you see the cars go by and to see how many seniors can possibly live on one road. I know our seniors had a lot of fun with this, and maybe Rachel will talk a little bit about it later. Graduation, as I mentioned earlier before, details are being worked out for graduation 2020, but we are still awaiting guidance from the governor, so we cannot make any definitive plans. Right now, Plan A, which would be our best scenario, would be taking our graduating class and splitting it into three and having students walk a stage outside to get their diploma. We could also hand out our awards at that same time. Of course, this also matters as to where we are in the phasing for COVID. Plan B would be to put all of our pieces together, except for the walking of the stage, and it would be a complete virtual ceremony. Rachel Walk, CM Battelson, and a few other students have been instrumental in working with Mr. Lyons, Mr. Cooper, and Dan Carriero to try to put this all together. We've talked about the absentee ballots already. Our track and our fields are open, as we stated before. People do need to pay attention to the fact that we are only in phase one. And I also want to take a moment to thank everyone from our Board of Ed to our administrators, our teachers, our support staff, our parents in our community for the patience and trust that they've shown us during this closure. It has been one of the most challenging times in my 34 years as an administrator, and I'm sure that I speak for others, that we would all much rather be teaching our students face-to-face. And any illusion that I had that working from home would be great is completely gone. I also want to thank our community for their support in the last Capitol project. That Capitol project provided us with an amazing technology infrastructure that also allowed us to have a one-to-one student device initiative. And these two upgrades have allowed us to instruct our students throughout the closure. Lucinda and her staff in technology have worked tirelessly from the first day back in March, and there just does not seem to be any end to technology issues in this certain, and this closure certainly has not altered that. We've now distributed Chromebooks to all families pre-K to five, and of course, our six through 12 had one-to-ones. And of course, I would put this probably close to 1,000 of our Chromebooks are out and about, and there were simply just too many challenges this year for us to do iPads to go home. Lucinda is working on a plan for next year. And that is all I have for you.
Okay, thank you. Student report, Rachel?
Yeah. Okay, so last time I was asked about the exchange students, so I got an update from Miss Pace. So I know Simon was the first to leave. He had to go home to Germany on March 16th. So that was like the first, I remember being in school and like having to say goodbye to him. So that was kind of the first one, like the pandemic started to hit, how it was like going to affect us all. And then I know Kenta left April 1st for Japan. Jovid just left last Sunday for Tajikistan. And then Myra left on Monday to go back to Jordan. And she's actually going to be quarantined for two weeks before she can see her family, I believe. So that's got to be hard. And then there are still three students here. So Sergio and Julia from Spain, and then Luca from Italy. They're still studying here. And they're doing well, I heard from Miss Pace, so that's cool. And then this, they're doing like, they're going to create a slideshow, and they're going to show like from AFS students from current and then from in the past. They are doing a slideshow about quarantine people all over the world, so I think that'll be really cool. And that should be done by June 1st.
Rachel, where will they show that slideshow?
I'm not sure where the slideshow will be shown. I know they're also doing something in the Penny Saver, so I, I know it'll get out there somehow.
Okay. Would you make sure that, that Carrie knows about it?
Yeah.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Are the two, are the two exchange students that are still here, are they here because of the pandemic or just to stay?
Um, I know, I'm not sure if their country won't let them back in or if they just wanted to stay. I know that she said they're like continuing their studies in Eden, so they might just want to stay and finish out their like high school year. So I'm not sure. But I just think it would be hard to be away from your family for that long during this time.
No, me too.
And then for seniors, I know that there's like more like recognition with the PTA signs. Everyone's been like loving that with the picture, like with the video that came out and stuff. And we made like a page in the yearbook for it and everything, so we're really thankful for that. We had like the Twitter highlights now that they're doing for senior athletes on the the, like the athletics, the Eden Athletics Twitter account. And that's really cool to see like every day a new senior being posted. And then we have the adopt a senior thing, which I think is really fun. I know Cheryl Carpenter adopted me, and I love everything I've gotten so far. And it's cool to see people post like the thank yous and the gifts they're getting. It's wonderful. So that's really cool, too. And then I know in the beginning for the first week, two weeks of May have been really busy for students because of the AP exams and then the scholarships for seniors and stuff. But I think that's it. That's all I have with everyone, what everyone's been up to. It's been pretty boring. You know, there's not much going on.
Nah. Rachel, could you just take a moment to talk about taking an AP exam like that this year?
Oh, my gosh. It was crazy. So normally they're like a three-hour exam, and you sit and it's very standardized. And now you just kind of have to find like a quiet room in your house, and it's 45 minutes. And what I think my least favorite part was you have to sign on like 30 minutes before and put in like your name, and then you have to type like a, it's like a paragraph of just making sure all like your keypads work on your computer and stuff. And then you have to sit there and just wait for the timer to go down. So you finish that in like five minutes, and then you have like a 25-minute countdown until the exam starts, and that was probably the most stressful part.
And is it, is it true that it was open book, too?
Yeah, you could like open tabs if you wanted to, so you could look stuff up. But to be honest, you had like 20 minutes to write like an essay, and it just wasn't enough time. So if you didn't know what you were doing, it was like hard to find everything.
I get it. I get it. It'll be interesting to see the scores.
Oh, I know, especially since like I know a lot of kids had to like drive up and like park in the school. And like I can see like it's okay to like write an essay and do that, but like some people had to take their AP Calculus exam in a car. And like I just, I had paper sprawled everywhere when I was doing that. Like I had to take, it was just, it's crazy. I don't know how people did it.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Okay, board report, roundtable.
I don't really have much. I mean, obviously, everyone knows the superintendent search is over and finalized and completed, so that is one box we can all check off. And we're super excited, and it's just been, this has been an interesting end to the year, for sure. It's obviously interesting end to Sandy's career and not how any of us envisioned it. I, you know, Sandy and I talk often about how working from home is not what it's cracked up to be at all, and I find myself exhausted most days and tired of being on my computer. And I am, I am ready to re, safely at some point, re-enter society and see my students and someday maybe not wear a mask on my face. Yeah, it's just been hard, but I, you know, kudos to all the teachers and staff and administrators in Eden. I mean, everybody's working hard and it's just a stressful time, and we appreciate, you know, putting the kids first because a lot of it's done at the expense, if you're an educator, it's done at the expense of your own kids, and it's a lot, and I think we're all looking forward to a break. I hate to say that.
Well, then we should, we should all be excited about Memorial Day.
Yes, for sure. And 80 degrees. I saw 80 degrees on the news tonight. I was like, what?
Excellent.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Eric. Go ahead.
I just, I'm anxious to go back to school, and I only have about two more years before I can retire, unless the state comes through with some wonderful incentive in the next couple of years. But um, I have really high-at-risk kids. You know, a good day is not always the best day, but I truly miss them. And Zooming with them has shed a whole different light on how much they miss school, which I find is very interesting, because once they're in school, it's like, eh, you know, they're still not sold on buying into getting a diploma, but, so this maybe has a good end to it. I'd also like to say, as Jen said, thanks to everybody that's, you know, doing what they have to do and pitching in. I do feel bad for all the seniors, but I think they'll find ways to come up with good things that came out of this. And I'd like to say, I think Marlene can probably attest. I think we have 10 or 11 senior signs on our street on Hillbrook, right, Marlene?
Yeah, we have a tenth of the class.
Did we get a prize?
So speaking, speaking of the seniors a little bit, I want to thank Eric from Dairy Queen for, you know, basically giving a gift to the seniors. And then the three crazy seniors that drove all the way to Erie last night to go to Krispy Kreme and wait two and a half hours in line to get their free dozen doughnuts. I enjoyed most of them today.
So Sandy, I just want to say I've been really enjoying those Penny Saver pages and seeing the, the kids and what they're doing. That's been excellent. Good job on that. And I want to just thank the Eden Teachers Association. They gave the Eden North Collins Food Pantry a $500 donation the other day, so it was really wonderful. And, and also, it was Teacher Appreciation Day a couple of weeks ago, and our teachers I know have been doing an amazing job. I can't even imagine what they're going through. I am thankful every single day I'm retired because I'm glad I'm not doing this. But I thank, I, I really want to, I thank them all for all the hard work they've been putting in because it's been, I, I know, something that nobody ever planned that they would have to do, so.
No, and, and if you sat through the National Honor Society inductions today, you can see how something that's so simple, like taking attendance or the connection issues that we have in Eden, just can just take time, right? It takes time to try to figure out how to do it. And, and our students, too, who have attempted to learn in a new way without a whole lot of instruction for anyone, and in many cases, like Rachel was talking about, not even being able to have the space or, or the means to do it. So, yeah, I'm super impressed with Eden and its positivity. I am.
I, whoops, sorry. For the, the National Honor Society, the senior, junior, or the juniors, it was interesting when they took their oath, they all couldn't stop giggling. It was really cute. When the soon-to-be eighth graders took their oath or their eighth graders, they were all just kind of like afraid to giggle, I think.
Agreed.
It was cute. It was very cute.
I would just take a moment to acknowledge, I'm sure everyone's heard that the Corn Fest is canceled. Certainly a sad time for all of us who enjoy corn and clams and the whole event. But what a tremendous hit that puts on, for example, the Booster Club, a number of other organizations within the Eden schools, and virtually every single organization, Poison Girls Club,
Right.
fire companies, et cetera, throughout Eden. And so yet another funding is down, the governor's doing this, and then, and then this tremendous hit to by far the Booster Club's largest fundraising activity. And I'm certain, certain, almost every organization in the town of Eden are their largest. And so it's, 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 yeah, I wish I had answers. I don't, of course. But just to acknowledge that, you know, it's going to be a challenging year in more ways than one coming, going forward.
I just wanted to say, I, I watched the, the Tu Harris Speech Seminars, the one on special ed. And especially interesting was the one on the opening of schools. I thought they were really excellent. And they're online now where all of you guys could watch them in your free time. They're very, very good. Did you get a chance to see it, Sandy?
Um, I, so let me see if I'm muted. I do watch every one that I can possibly get my hands on, Ellen. We, we actually work with three law firms, and so we're able to see them all.
Anybody else have anything? Okay.
The next regular Board of Education meeting is June 17th, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Well, we have something next week, right, Laura?
Budget, budget vote, or budget discussion.
On Tuesday, May 26th, is the budget hearing where we will be rolling out the numbers for the voters. It, too, will be virtual.
What time is that at?
7:00 PM.
Okay, are we doing executive session?
Yeah.
Okay. You have to make a motion to go into it.
All right, so can you go down to that, Lucinda? B. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment. Hang on.
Lucinda, that breakout, those breakout rooms just came a bit too early.
History of a particular person.
There you go. There you go.
Can I finish the action?
Yes.
Enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any opposing? Motion carried.
Okay, so Lucinda will put up a breakout room for you up on the screen for you to accept. That will put us into executive session. That'll leave the live streaming rolling for any audience members that want to wait for us to come back into regular session. So when you see that screen pop up on your screen, please say yes.
I said yes, but I got put in there before we actually were in. And so then I exited it.
Yeah, Lucinda, can you try it again? That might be where Ellen landed. Okay, I'm going in.
All right, real good. So Sandy, it was 8:13. I made the motion to come out. Ellen seconded. It was approved.
Now that, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education return to regular session at 8:14 PM.
Second.
Okay, I'm confused. So that motion that you just read, Ellen, is the one that Don just told me about, right?
No, that was to get out of executive session.
Understood. Gotcha. So 8:14, I'm sorry, who's the first one?
The first one must have been about 8:12.
Okay. No, who's the first person to do the motion to turn to regular?
Don.
I second.
Okay. Thank you. And then adjourn?
Let's do that. So that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education meeting be adjourned at 8:15 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Hi.
Yep, and Jen.
I think she hung up her phone.
Oh.
All right.
Finish it off, Don.
Good night.
All right, we'll see everybody on Tuesday at 7 o'clock. Have a great Memorial Day weekend.